It is now, it is now seven oh one and I am calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Fazek.
Here.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
And Ms. Gintz.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Fazek, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, December second. We have two board salutes today. Mr. Carubus.
Two thousand and twenty-four University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. The Board salutes Niqua Valley High School English teacher Jillian Snyder, who is among the recipients of the University of Chicago's Outstanding Educator Award. Students accepted into the University of Chicago's class of two thousand and twenty-eight were asked to nominate educators whose guidance helped them on their path towards intellectual growth. Responses were received from hundreds of students and Mrs. Snyder stood out among a field of incredible, capable, and inspiring educators. Congratulations.
Ms. Fazek.
Niqua Valley Senior achieves rank of Eagle Scout. The Board salutes Niqua Valley Senior Natalie Dawes for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest achievement advancement rank in scouting. For her Eagle Scout project, Natalie constructed and installed multiple wood duck boxes for the Naperville Park District. She is one of a small but growing group of female Eagle Scouts. Congratulations to Natalie on achieving the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout.
Let's give both of these achievements a great applause. I was very pleased to see Jillian. That was my son's English teacher, so, long ago. Now we have our student representative report by Bangula from Niqua Valley High School.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bangula and I'm the school board representative for Niqua Valley High School. With the second quarter of the school year starting up, here are some highlights of the first. Last month, Niqua was named a Blue Ribbon School. This recognition highlights schools that excel in academic performance or make significant strides in closing achievement gaps among different student groups. We are so grateful that our faculty and students have worked hard and received this recognition. Our school administrators are traveling to Washington DC to pick up this recognition and to celebrate, we raised the Blue Ribbon Flag on November second and we will be holding a school-wide celebration on November twelfth. With fall sports coming to an end, here are some new updates with, along with many successes. Girls varsity tennis became DVC champs and competed at state last weekend. Back in September, both boys and girls golf became DVC champs. Last weekend, the girls swim and dive won DVC and became DVC champs. Boys cross country did great at conference, becoming DVC champs, as well as placing fourth at sectionals, bringing the team to state. Lastly, girls cross country did a great at sectionals with two girls qualifying for state. If there's a student interested in trying out for a winter sport, tryout information can be found at niquaathletics.org. This past week, we held our annual career week in which students were able to network with professionals and determine if their interests and talents align with any careers. We also had some Halloween spirit by holding our annual Spooktacular Concert and sharing some scary stories during act option periods. Second quarter holds a variety of events. First, on November eighth, we'll be having our in-school Veterans Day ceremony at eleven forty AM. We will have a special bell schedule and the ceremony will be livestreamed, which can be found at niquatv.org. Next, from November fourteenth through the sixteenth, we will have our fall main stage play, The Losers, which is our first play written by a student. On November twenty-first and twenty-fifth, we'll be holding parent-teacher conferences in which sign-ups will open soon. Next, our student musicians will be playing during our annual Holiday Crystal Concert, which will take place on December fifth and sixth. On December ninth, we will be having our academic planning night, in which parents and students who are currently freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are encouraged to attend. This night is used to help determine an appropriate class schedule for the twenty-five to twenty-six school year. Lastly, we will be having our winter black box show, A Nomineous, produced by our theater department on December twelfth and thirteenth. With the second quarter starting up, we continue to look forward and all that leads is to just more excitement. I hope you all have a great rest of your evening and go Wildcats.
Next, we have our school spotlight and tonight is Matia Valley presented by Brandy Bain, Lisa Carnahan, and our student guest, Janya Gopi, Denise Kanmoni, Shamista Mathi, and Sebastian Roldan, and Adita Singh.
Good evening. I'm Brandy Bain, Chair for the World Language and English Language Learners Department at Matia. On behalf of the department and our extensive ELL population, I would like to express gratitude for the opportunity to share with you all tonight. I'd also like to acknowledge the support from our Matia administration, from board member Susan Demme, and from Dr. Howard, who have all spent time getting to know our program, staff, and students in order to better understand this diverse group, their needs, and witnessing their successes. The role of DC was offered to me because of the vision that I presented on how to improve a growing department with a multitude of challenges. I pride myself on advocating for those needs and of supporting staff who come to me with solutions on how to best serve students. Lisa Carnahan came with the idea for a peer tutor program prior to me officially becoming DC and taking over, and I saw the value in helping get it up and running immediately. This is the second year for our program and it continues to have a positive impact on our classrooms and for our students. Lisa and our peer tutor representatives will now speak to this innovative program. Thanks again for your time.
Namaskar, Guru. Good evening. My name is Janya Gopi and I'm currently a senior in Matia Valley High School. I joined our ELL tutoring program because I wanted to share my knowledge and help other people who may be ramping up with their coursework. I remember times when I needed help with certain topics and subjects, and the support I received helped immensely. Being able to give back to this amazing community feels rewarding. I believe this tutoring program helps our school by building a supportive academic community. It also helps our geographically diverse student group enjoy their collaborating learning program, which in turn contributes to the confidence and motivation. Thank you. Dhanyavada Guru, Shubharaatri.
Namaskaram. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Shamista Matham, a senior at Matia Valley High School. I joined the ELL tutor program to help peers like me navigate through their new educational system and environmental challenges which every new student who comes to this country has. This program helps students develop their confidence by getting them to work on their communication skills with tutors. This helps peers get comfortable around school and excel their academics. Dhanyavada Mulu.
Samaste. I'm Aditi Singh and I'm a junior at Matia Valley High School. I joined the ELL program as a sophomore because I wanted to help students who wouldn't have the same opportunities as me back when I was in eighth grade. I never got the chance to express myself the way I wanted to, but I want others to have the opportunity to be able to express themselves and be able to help others who are in need. So that's why I joined the ELL program. Thank you. Namaste.
Dobreevee. Good evening. My name is Denise Hemaney and I am a senior at Matia Valley High School. I'm part of the ELL tutoring program where I help students with limited English proficiency under sen geometry and physics. I believe this program is both beneficial and necessary. It not only helps students with subjects themselves, but also makes it easier for them to adapt to school life. When I first arrived in America, this program didn't exist. I struggled a lot with translating specific terms, and I would have really appreciated it if someone had been there to explain those details to me. Now that I have a good understanding of these subjects, I want to help others in the same way. I believe I can make it easier for the students to succeed by guiding them through these challenges. Dyaakuyu. Thank you.
Hola. Sorry. Hola, my name is Sebastian Roldan. I'm a senior and I'm a junior to the ELLA tutor program to help students who are learning English and adjusting to their culture. This program is important because we can share a lot of things about different countries and feel confident and more involved in the school. When a student feels supported, our whole school community becomes stronger. Thank you.
They've said a lot that I would love to say for them. So I started this program because as you can see, we have a lot of students who are quite qualified in their own language, their own home language, and then have succeeded in the English language, and I didn't want to lose them as the asset that they are. So in order to help other students belong, we have a student tutor guide program. So they not only push into the classrooms, but they also actually meet new students at the door to guide them around the school. So the first person you meet might also speak your native language with you. We've grown from twelve students to start to thirty-two this year. So it's already growing exponentially, which is awesome. I really love it. I get to work with just amazing people. So it's an easy thing to be able to do because it's great to see them continue to grow and to help others. Several of these students are seniors, which saddens me because I'm going to lose them as they graduate, but they've already inspired a lot of other students to help out. And the feedback that I get from the teachers whose rooms they're in is always real grateful that they're there to help out. And they don't just help out any student that speaks their native language. They're helping out anybody because they can understand the ability to come into a new school, a new climate, and need those questions answered. And it's not always a teacher you want to go to, but to have a peer there is really important.
I think she kind of covered what's in the slides, just in her own words there.
Okay, that is true. I need to put, so they actually give up half their lunch period and sometimes more to help out with labs. I know Dennis is in physics. I know some of them are in English. So they're pushing into all sorts of different classes. So two times a week during Tuesday and Thursday, they'll go into the classroom, self-help. And yeah, the feedback, like I said, has been great. So, and the how is, they have to apply for this. There is an application process. They all had to submit an application and get two staff recommendations in order to make it and have be in good GPA standings. So, they're amazing.
Well, thank you for presenting this. It's a very inspirational program and it's so important to welcome the diversity in our schools and our community. And I can imagine how supportive it feels to have someone who's a peer come and talk with you and work with you and welcome you to the school environment. So, thank you so much for telling us about your wonderful program and I wish you continued success both at Matia and in the future. So, thank you. It is now time for a public comment and sixty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. Only one person will be allowed at the podium for each comment. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and our school district personnel. We also ask that those attending the board be cognizant, addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. If you have any handouts for the Board of Education, please hand the items to Michelle Carter and then, here. The clock will start when you begin talking. So, we have five speakers tonight. The first is Danielle Kuglen Seago.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent Tally, District Administrator, Educators, and Students. My name is Danielle Kuglen Seago and I'm a proud parent of two District two oh four students. One of my children has already been through the halls of Owen Elementary and is now a student at Still Middle School. The other one is in fifth grade this year at Owen Elementary, and I'm here tonight to express my deepest gratitude for the incredible educators and the administrators at Owen Elementary. Recently, we've received news about a valued teacher at Owen who is courageously embracing a new chapter of self-expression. And I have to say, as a parent, I am grateful that my kids are getting to see the real world. It's a full rainbow of diversity and it takes courage to live authentically and within their own school walls. In our family, we believe that everyone deserves to feel comfortable bringing their true selves into the world, and I'm grateful our school is a place where that's possible. This brings me back to when my daughter was in kindergarten and it actually was during the pandemic. So if you could imagine a kindergartner trying to get on Zoom, it was like herding cats. Add to it, we learned she's also struggling with dyslexia. So it was a little battle every day to get her to show up to that virtual classroom. So I pulled out my mom magic. We had a little costume bin. She pulled out her favorite Easter bunny ears and I'd use my makeup to make a little nose and whiskers, and she'd put on a smile and hop her way into her virtual classroom. And that is how I got her to show up every day. And her teacher welcomed that bunny version of my daughter every single day, whiskers and all. I share this not to make light of the challenges of these times, but to show that the very best educators create an environment where students and staff feel accepted as they are, with whatever unique bunny ears they bring. And I appreciate that Owen Elementary has been a place for our family, a safe space for every child and educator to be their true selves. I want to take a quick moment to recognize Principal Heather Whistler, whose leadership has been a constant source of strength and grace for our community. She has shown us what it's like to stand firm and shine brightly even in the face of pressure and negativity. Heather is more than just a principal. She's the heart of Owen and we are grateful for her. And to our teachers, including our beloved elementary teacher, we thank them for showing up every day with compassion, courage, and dedication to shape the lives of our children. They are a gift to our community and we are better because of them. So thank you to them for being a part of what makes Owen Elementary a very special place. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robyn Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Robyn and I am the proud parent of two District two oh four students. And I'm here to voice support for LGBTQ plus students and faculty in our school district. This school district, I know this school district recognizes how important it is for students to feel safe and included in their schools. In the words of the Equity Belief Statement, "We are committed to creating a culture where all staff, students, and families feel safe, welcome, respected, and a part of the school community." This commitment aligns with what research has found. Students who attend schools with affirming LGBTQ plus resources and supports report more positive school experiences, including lower victimization and absenteeism and higher academic achievement. I am proud that our district implements many of these strategies like comprehensive anti-bullying and harassment policies and support for GSAs. One area in which I hope the schools continue to improve is increasing student access to LGBTQ plus inclusive curricular resources. In Illinois, less than a fifth of LGBTQ plus students were taught positive representations of LGBTQ plus people, history, or events. And we know how important representation is. It's important not just in historical examples, but also in the people we interact with on a daily basis. I know this board recognizes diversity as a strength and wants the diversity of our student population to be reflected in its employees. I also know not everyone in this community feels the same way about the beauty of diversity in society, especially with respect to the LGBTQ plus population. And so, to finish, I would like to remind all of my LGBTQ plus friends, family, and community members of the words of the great African-American writer, intellectual, and social critic James Baldwin, who said, "Please try to remember that what they believe as well as what they do and cause you to endure does not testify to your inferiority, but to their inhumanity." Thank you.
The next speaker is Alesha Smith.
Hello, my name is Alesha Smith. I am an alumni of Babansy Valley High School and Gregory Middle School. I taught at Kendall Elementary School and Georgetown Elementary School, and I currently live in the Gomber neighborhood where my niece and nephews attend school. Two oh four needs equity in having successful schools. Four two oh four schools fall below the state average in state testing: Fisher, Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. When the district designed the boundaries of Georgetown, it gave them a low-income population of sixty-three percent. That is more than tripled the district average of twenty-one percent. Longwood's low-income population is fifty-eight percent, which is almost tripled the district average of twenty-one percent. Then the district created even more inequity by having three of its schools with the highest low-income percentages feed into Fisher Middle School. A student attending either Georgetown or McCarty from kindergarten through fifth grade and then attending Fisher will have attended a school for ten years that has not met the state average in testing. School districts do not have to create inequitable schools that cannot meet the state testing averages. Naperville two oh three's low-income average is eighteen percent compared to two oh four's twenty-one percent. Naperville two oh three does not have a single school with a low-income average that is more than double the district average, let alone triple. As a result, every single school in Naperville two oh three is well above the state average in state testing. Its school, with the second highest low-income percentage, Scott Elementary School, has been exemplary two consecutive years and this year won a National Blue Ribbon Award. A two thousand sixteen study found that in almost all major cities, Black and Brown students are much more likely to attend schools where most of their peers are considered poor or low-income. Researchers have found that the single most powerful predictor of racial gaps in educational achievement is the extent to which students attend schools surrounded by other low-income students. The time is now to fix systemic inequities in our educational system. The needs and rights of children cannot wait. For a kindergartner at Georgetown and McCarty, will it be another ten years of the same trend line? If this school board administration is committed to equity, this segregation by income needs to be fixed. If Naperville two oh three can make sure that all of its students are attending successful schools, why can't two oh four? We deserve to be included in the district's educational excellence. We want equitable schools for Fisher, Georgetown, Longwood, and McCarty. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Anthony Rush Jaliff.
Hello, I'm Anthony Rush Jaliff and I'm a junior at Niqua Valley High School. For decades, far-right groups have targeted teachers. It started in the seventies with gay and lesbian teachers. In nineteen seventy-eight, California tried passing the Briggs Initiative, which was a bill that would allow school districts to ban both gay and lesbian teachers. Fast forward today, and there are still groups that are targeting and harassing teachers that they believe are spreading transgender ideology, even though there is no such thing as a transgender ideology, and there never has been. The term is used as a scapegoat to excuse the disgusting bigotry directed towards trans people. The staff of Owen Elementary have done nothing wrong and anyone who says they have is just using it as a hateful, transphobic witch hunt. The fact that this is even a discussion is abhorrent. I ask all of you to simply ponder what you think happens when trans students hear that there are parents who hate trans teachers. It leads to bullying and it leads to harassment of trans students. It leads to trans students becoming isolated within their own schools. Because when you engage in debate over someone's personal identity, you dehumanize them and you normalize prejudice, thus encouraging the mistreatment of those marginalized individuals. Trans people exist and so do trans students. Ignoring their existence won't change this fact. Hate should have no home in District two oh four, and so I beg of the district not to capitulate to any bigoted demands and defend your trans teachers. Awake Illinois is classified as a hate group by the Southern Poverty Law Center. They go on and on about protecting kids. Well, how about protecting the trans kids? Because trans students deserve to feel safe at school just as much as their peers. They don't deserve to be called names. They don't deserve to be laughed at and ridiculed. Trans rights are human rights and trans staff certainly don't deserve to be attacked and blatantly harassed simply because of their identity. Thank you.
The last speaker is Alesha Matthew.
Good evening. My name is Alesha Matthew and I'm a current senior at Matia Valley High School. So we all know about climate change. Our students, our children, and some of our teachers talk about the moral imperative and urgency for action on the climate crisis. We have anxiety. We have this feeling of doom. But sometimes, we think that we can't make change, especially young people. I have something that I want to bring up, something that I'm very passionate about and something that I've participated in. It's called the Building Leadership Around Sustainable Transformation Program, and it reminds students that they can make change. Right now, it's up to us to create a sustainable future and fight the climate doom affecting our generation. But since we're so young, it's hard to see how we can contribute to the crisis. To connect generations and avoid placing the burden on young people alone, BLAST provides mentorship, funding, and support to students interested in creating solutions. Students apply and submit initial proposals, and if accepted, they're partnered with mentors who provide guidance throughout the pitch and implementation process. The competition this year is scheduled for April two thousand and twenty-five, and participants will have the opportunity to compete for funding and resources that could aid in furthering their project. All participants get support from this, not just the winners. And this is through the sponsors Accelerate Climate Solutions, the Naperville Environment and Sustainability Task Force, and more. Like I mentioned earlier, I was a participant in the two thousand and twenty-four BLAST competition, and I created a project that would help reduce plastic bag waste. We know that plastic bags can't be recycled in traditional recycling infrastructure, so I created a database that could show which stores actually recycled plastic bags. And this is available online. So it's something that I use to create tangible change. I wanted to let you all know about this opportunity, and I know that we have a lot of students here. So if any of you are interested, you can find it on the Accelerate Climate Solutions website. And the deadline for initial applications is January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. I hope that if you're interested, you apply, and I hope that you know that this is a great experience to make tangible change. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie community. Our Strategic Plan Annual Report was published last week. This is our second annual report, which provides updates on the second year of our strategic plan accomplishments. This annual report holds the school system accountable for the action items that are in the plan. Our strategic plan is a five-year plan, therefore it is not expected that all actions will be accomplished now. I feel as if we are moving in the right direction with where- I feel as if we are moving in the right direction with where we are with our accomplishments. The action items are a work in progress with more to come over the next few years as we complete this five-year journey. On Wednesday, November 13th, at 6:00 a.m., the Parent Portal to sign up for parent-teacher conferences will open. The portal closes on November 19th at 6:00 p.m. All parents or guardians should use that portal to sign up for those very important conferences. Friday, November 15th, has been designated as School Board Members' Day. We want to thank these volunteers for their hours of service to the students, parents, and staff of Indian Prairie. These seven people who surround me have demonstrated their commitment to ensuring that our school system is the best. They question, they are engaged, they support, they listen, they work as a team. They may not all agree, however, they respond in a unified way. That is what is needed, and I respect and appreciate the ways in which they serve our school district. November has been designated as Native American Heritage Month. This year's proclamation from the White House reads in part, "During National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the countless contributions of Native people past and present, honor the influence they have had on the advancement of our nation, and recommit ourselves to upholding trust and treaty responsibilities, strengthening tribal sovereignty, and advancing tribal self-determination. Our schools will incorporate lessons related to Native American as part of their instructional program." And finally, our schools will be closed tomorrow for Election Day, with 20 of our buildings in DuPage and Will County serving as polling places. We encourage our communities to participate in tomorrow's election. District 204 bond referendum is listed near the end of the ballot. This measure, which will fund $420 million in district-wide safety and facility improvement without a tax rate increase, will enhance all of our district's schools through security upgrades, infrastructure improvements, and operational efficiencies. I'll now turn the meeting back over to Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. I now need a motion for approval of Consent Agenda Items D through F.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items D through F as presented.
Second, any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
And Ms. Faustic?
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the criminal law, world history through media, peer partners adapted art, and sports medicine II for the 2025 through 2026 school year, and construction II for the 2026 through 2027 school year as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve the high school course offerings update as presented.
I need a second. Sorry. Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Faustic?
Yes.
Ms. Gents?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
And Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Motion passes. I next need a motion and a second for the appointment of Allison Faustic as the IASB Governing Board Representative.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Allison Faustic as the IASB Governing Board Representative.
I second.
Any discussion?
You want to just tell people what that is?
Yeah.
Or she want me to? Or do you want Allison? How about Allison?
Allison, yeah. Allison can tell everybody. So, being the governing board representative is serving as a delegate on behalf of our board for, at the IASB conference in November, and I will cast our votes in the general session that takes place at that time.
All right. So, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
I'm so sorry. Who?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
I think Katie did.
I seconded.
Thank you. Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Jane?
Yes.
Ms. Faustic?
I abstained.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
And Ms. Gents?
Yes.
We will now have a presentation from Jason Guzman regarding the school report cards.
While he's coming. Tonight, we will have our annual report card presentation that will share how our district has done with the Illinois Report Card parameters. We will have tonight Mr. Jason Guzman, Assessment Specialist. Mr. Charles Sprandell, Executive Director for Research and Assessment, who was supposed to co-present with Mr. Guzman, is not able to be here tonight due to an issue that developed over the weekend when he was out of town visiting his children in college in Minnesota. So, Mr. Guzman will take care of all of this.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Tally, District Administrators, and members of the community. I'm thankful for this opportunity to be able to present to you, even though I was really... ...on our annual update related to school report card data, including summative designation ratings, district academic achievement, and an update on progress report, if you will, on our strategic plan metrics related to academic growth and student achievement. What will be presented tonight has implicated... Objective II and Board Policies 220, 615, and 634. Tonight, with a conversation about the summative designation ratings that are assigned each year to schools across the state of Illinois, ranging from exemplary at the top all the way down to comprehensive support. Important to understand, as we set the stage for recapping our summative designations, that these are based on multiple indicators, and when looking at these indicators, high schools are grouped separately from elementary and middle schools. There are similarities in the indicators for summative designation ratings toward the top of that list in the areas of proficiency, which basically represents student achievement, and at the bottom of that list, where we see chronic absenteeism and five essentials participation. In the middle is where you'll see differences for elementary and middle school in the areas of ELA and math growth, and when we look at high school, those factors are replaced by graduation rate. So this is a very involved process, and we've tried to simplify it on this slide with an example. Basically, what happens to assign summative designation ratings is that each school earns a score for each of these indicator areas, and those scores are multiplied by the weights that represent the slice of the pie associated with those percentages. The multiplication happens, score times the weight, and you end up with your earned points, which are added up down the far-right column. In this example, we see an overall school index score of 82.7, and this would be for, in this example, an elementary or middle school in the state of Illinois. Sometimes we refer to that index score as the all-student group score for a school. The process then turns to grouping. Actually, first, it ranks all of the school index scores from highest to lowest across the state of Illinois. The top 10 percent of schools are identified, and the school that is at the bottom of that 10 percent sets the cut score for the exemplary rating. Similarly, toward the bottom, we have the bottom 5 percent of schools identified, and the top school in that group sets the cut for comprehensive support. Next, index scores are calculated for each student group at a school, as long as each student group has at least 20 students included in it. Once those student group index scores are calculated, those are compared to the cut score for the bottom 5 percent of students overall. If any student group index score falls within that bottom 5 percent, that school is assigned a targeted rating. Otherwise, a school earns a commendable rating. So you can see here the distribution of ratings over the past five school years when ratings were issued for Indian Prairie School District schools. Happy to report that for the 23-24 school year, almost a third of our district schools have earned the rating of exemplary. We'll now do a little deeper dive into the achievement measures that I talked about earlier, and because several of the upcoming slides have a similar layout, I'll go ahead and set the stage here. So at the left, you will see Indian Prairie's student performance over the past three school years with a pre-pandemic data point for reference, and state comparisons at the right of the slide over those same school years. You can see here on this slide, we're talking about, all the way at the left, elementary and middle school student performance on the IAR assessment, and specifically in the subject area of ELA. In each of the stacked bar graphs, you will see the distribution of students who fell into each performance level, the top two of which are meets and exceeds, and the total of your meets and exceeds percentages can be seen at the top of each of the stacked bar graphs. It's important to note here that, and has been mentioned in previous presentations on student achievement, that Illinois has one of the most strict definitions when it comes to defining proficiency. It doesn't merely represent that students are on grade level, but rather that students have mastered standards in a subject area. You can see over the past three school years, for ELA, we have shown steady gains, even to the point where in the most recent school year, we have meets and exceeds percentages that exceed pre-pandemic proportions, and we continue to outperform state averages. Moving on to math, we see, again, steady increases over the last three school years, not quite to the point of pre-pandemic proportions, but we are closing in on that target. We continue to outperform state averages. We'll talk a little bit about IAR average growth percentiles, which, as I mentioned earlier, have a significant impact when it comes to determining summative designation ratings for elementary and middle schools. Just as a recap, basically, who take consecutive administrations for IAR are assigned a growth percentile. Their growth from one administration to the next is calculated, and then they're ranked according to that growth and other factors and assigned a percentile rank accordingly. At the left, you see student growth percentiles for ELA, ranging between the 50th and 56th percentile, and for math, over the last three school years, those growth percentiles range between the 54th and 57th percentile. If you're looking for the state average, that's always the 50th percentile regardless of the subject area and school year. Moving on to high school, we see our percentages of students meeting or exceeding state standards over the last three years, ranging between 56.4 percent and 58.2 percent. And I think it's important to note here that some people may wonder, does that mean that only, for example, in the 23-24 school year, that only 57.4 percent of our students are ready for college? And the answer to that question is no. We know that because our college entrance and persistent rates are closer to the 90% mark. Can see also not only the consistency over the last three years, but we continue to outperform state averages in the content area of ELA at the high school level. Moving on to math for high school, as measured by the SAT, again, consistency over the last three years in terms of students meeting or exceeding state standards. Again, not quite to the point of pre-pandemic proportions, but we are closing in on that target and still outperforming state averages. This 2024 administration of the SAT, as many of you know, will mark the last administration of the SAT as the State Accountability Assessment. In spring 2025, we'll begin using the ACT again, and in summer of 2025, that means there will be an opportunity to reset these performance level cut scores and potentially open the door for what it means to qualify students as proficient in the state of Illinois. We see the consistency at the high school level continue as we look at simply the average SAT scores in both evidence-based reading and writing at the left and math at the right for both Indian Prairie students and students across the state over the last three years. The frame of reference, the skill scores for each of these content areas on the SAT range between 200 and 800. Onto some non-achievement data. We'll first take a look at student mobility, and while this is a non-achievement measure, it does, of course, have implications for student achievement, and student mobility, just as a refresher, is defined as the percentage of students who move in or out of a school or district at least once during the course of a school year. You can see, looking back to 2018, we, in Indian Prairie, had a mobility rate that was about a percentage point less than the state average. That trend continued through 2021 until 2022, when we nearly matched the state average, until we slightly exceeded it in the last two school years. Moving on to the school quality indicator of chronic absenteeism, we can see that Indian Prairie has been below the state average consistently and paralleled its trajectory. We know that schools in our district have given a significant amount of attention and time and effort devoted to making sure students are in school so they have access to learning in the hopes to decrease this absenteeism rate. We're hopeful that that 2023 percentage at 19.3 percent will serve as a peak, as we saw a downward turn in the right direction for 2024. Another measure that's of particular importance to the high school level is AP performance, Advanced Placement Performance, and participation. And you can see a steady increase in both of those areas for Indian Prairie students since 2021. And just to help you make sense of the numbers on this slide, we'll look specifically at the May 2024 administration, all the way to the right, where we see that 3,710 students in Indian Prairie took 7,752 AP exams, and of those 3,710 students, 3,254 had at least one score of a 3, 4, or 5, which AP considers pass. one score of a 3, 4, or 5, which AP considers passing. Not only have participation by students and number of exams increased, but the pass rates for all of those exams have also increased over the same time period, even to the point where in '23 and '24, we saw pass rates exceed pre-pandemic pass rates. Good news for sure there. Final part of the presentation tonight, we'll focus on the strategic plan and mainly on the metrics from earlier in the presentation. So priority one, objective two. The first part of it here focuses on student growth, and specifically that more than 50% of students will meet or exceed growth. At grades K through 8, that's measured by the Internal Eye Ready Assessment from fall to spring, not to be confused with the IAR growth percentile that I talked about previously. At the high school level, that's measured by the SAT suite of assessments using their annual growth norms. Take a look and see how our results turned out. Over the past two school years, we see at the left the K-8 eye-ready results, and at the right, 9 through 11 SAT suite results. For both of those levels, we see that more than 50% of students meet or exceed growth targets. And for K through 8, in both content areas, from '22, '23 to '23, '24, those percentages have increased. And the same can be said of math at the high school level. The second part of this objective deals with meeting or exceeding state standards as measured by these state accountability assessments. Here, we specifically look for students as a whole and across our demographic and special services groups that they would meet or exceed state standards at a higher proportion than their peers across the state. So our last four slides lay out in similar fashion the results for how we're doing in this area. At the left, you can see the all-student performance. In this case, 61% of Indian Prairie students in the content area of ELA for elementary and middle schools have met or exceeded standards as compared with 41% at the state level. And then moving to the right across the slide, we see the comparisons for Indian Prairie students with our demographic groups along with each special services group. In each case, Indian Prairie students outperform their counterparts at the state in these groups. Moving along to IAR math, we see a similar pattern prevail. And high school, the ELA equivalent as measured by the Reading and Writing Assessment, we see the all-student group. We have Indian Prairie students outperforming students at the state. The same is true for each of our demographic and special services group here. And finally, for high school math, we see this common theme again. So overall, we believe there's a lot of information here to celebrate, a lot of good news. And we believe credit is due to staff at the school level who serve and support students on a daily basis as long, I'm sorry, as well as the families who partner with them in that. At this point, I'm happy to do my best in taking some questions.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start out and ask if anyone from our Student Advisory Board has any comments or questions that they would like to bring up? No? Okay. All right, then we'll start with Ms. Dunning.
Appreciate each year having a chance to take a look and see where our assessments lie in comparison to the balance of the state. And looking at a couple of slides early on, very happy to see that the that the growth is moving in a positive direction since the pandemic. Slide 16. Let's see, was it slide 16? Not slide 16, slide 17. That was one that I just, I really didn't have any questions, but just comments from a standpoint of chronic absenteeism has been something that we were really focused on last year, and it's continued to be a huge area of concern, I know, across the board and not just our district. So any particular measures that you know of that seem to be working really well that we'll keep focusing on? Or any particular, that was really my only question, any particular things that seem to be working really well from seeing that come down?
So I'll speak to this one, if you don't mind. So our elementary schools have all created their own chronic absenteeism plans, very similar to their school improvement plans. They have specific tasks that they're looking into with regards to how to address chronic absenteeism. That includes such things as sending home quote, warning letters to families when they're getting close to being chronically absent, calling families, even texting families, letting them know that they're close to being chronically absent. We also sent out new information regarding attendance. This was spearheaded by Ms. Laura Rosenbloom and her group of principals to address and inform our families about the fact that attendance in school is important. And, you know, going on a trip, that's an unexcused absence. It doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused. It counts towards chronic absenteeism. Anytime the child is not in school counts against chronic absenteeism. And I think some of our families were thinking, well, it's excused. That it is a national definition, any excuse. And so 10%, so if you're in the first semester of school and you're looking at, you know, roughly 65 days of school, if you've missed six days, then you're chronically absent. So this continues to be an issue across, as you mentioned, across the nation. And it all has, as you can see, it happens starting right after the pandemic. We hope this will continue to go down. But this, I'm going to say this, and some people may not like it. It's the responsibility of parents to get children into school.
Thank you, Superintendent. I do think that definition that you shared, had shared with us earlier this school year or late last school year was really awakening because I don't think many of us, I know that I didn't necessarily understand the true definition, so I think that's extremely helpful. But overall, just pleased to see that we're moving in the right direction and extremely pleased to see slide, bottom line, that all of our schools are in the first two tiers. Thank you.
And I'll just add a little bit about that. 29%, 30% of our schools are exemplary. Our neighbor to the other side, only 14% are exemplary. I'll be glad.
Okay, Ms. Gents.
Thank you so much for the presentation. There is so much to go over. And you did a wonderful job without Charles. I'm just saying that. I do want to just kind of reiterate what Board Member Dunning had said, how it is so, just honestly, the positive uptrend is great. The fact that we don't have any targeted schools this year, you know, everything seems to be trending in the right direction. I did have a question that was just kind of brought up with the chronic absenteeism. It's probably more for you, Dr. Tally. But the mental health days, do they count towards that?
They do. They're an absence. So even though they're excused by the state, they do count.
Okay. And then I just had one question. On slide 13, I did notice both for the district and the state, the numbers going up on Level 1. Is there anything that, you know, any thoughts on why? And obviously, not as bad for the district, but still, it is a steady increase with the SATs.
So, great question. The one thing I did forget to mention on the high school slides here is that you do see here that, probably noticed that there are four performance levels instead of five that we saw for IAR. So we do have the same percentage of students now being split between four performance levels as opposed to the five that we saw before. The top two are still your meets and exceeds category.
Yes, which all look great, yes. Okay, so that makes sense. Yeah, that was honestly my only question. Thank you again.
Mr. Rising.
Sorry. Okay. First of all, before I make some comments and ask some questions, I just kind of want to set the stage a little bit first. I know there's some misinformation out there regarding what proficiency is and isn't. But I go back to looking at all of our schools and our district as a whole. And if you go to slide 5, when I look at, I'm sorry, it's the one with the, it's slide 9, my apologies. When I look at all of our schools, and then I look at how all of our schools are ranked as compared to the state. If you take all 22 of our elementaries, every single one of our elementary ranks in the top 25% statewide of all elementary schools. If you look at our middle schools, all of our middle schools rank in the top 9% or higher. And all of our high schools rank in the top 3% or higher. So academically, we do pretty well. And I think this is a testament to that as well. Now, if you go to slide 9, what slide, I'm sorry, slide 5. If you look at the way they break these things up, there is a heavy weight on growth, whether it's ELA or math growth. So I want to come back to that. And then if you could go to the first slide for IAR proficiency, which I believe is slide 10. Yeah, so just to brief history on proficiency, a wise educator that I respect a great deal said this once, is that if you want to know how your kid is doing, ask their teacher and talk to their teacher. Don't look at proficiency rates for a school, for a district, for a subgroup of people that we are measuring. Talk to the teacher about how your student is doing if you want to know how your student is doing. Unfortunately, there are those that will misrepresent what proficiency is. And to give a brief history on proficiency, prior to 2012, our school district, when it came to math and reading, all of our kids, the average for proficiency in our district was in the higher 80 percentile or lower 90 percentile. Well, what proceeded to happen after that was they changed the cut scores in 2013. In 2014, they introduced a new test from ISAT to PARC. They also changed the cut scores again. In 2018, they introduced the IAR test, and they introduced new scores again. So if you're keeping track, that's two test changes and three cut score changes since 2012. Our students haven't gotten worse academically. Remember what I said about growth? What the state decided they wanted to do instead of measure proficiency is they wanted to measure growth better. And if you look at the State Board of Education's definition of proficiency, it says, and I quote, "a snapshot of how well our students have mastered the standards." So again, if we're going back to this, proficiency is considered that Level 5 and Level 4. I am tired of people saying that if our kids aren't proficient, if they aren't in that Level 5 or Level 4, they're not at grade level because that is categorically not true whatsoever. It is the mastery of the standards that is Level 5 and Level 4. My kids, both my daughters, who went to top universities in the Midwest, there are times that they were at a Level 3 and a Level 2, and they went to some of the top universities in the Midwest. So I want the community to understand that proficiency does not mean, and nor has it ever meant, grade level. And then, as you mentioned too, proficiency is different between every state because there are some states that only have four categories. We have five categories. Our cut scores proficiency, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think for both ELA and math, Illinois is in the top five in the country.
Top four.
Top four in the country. So even comparing proficiency from state to state, you can't do that unless you understand what the baseline is and what it's actually measuring. And clearly, Illinois has measured growth more than it's measuring grade level, which it's not measuring. It's the growth that's the most important. Slide 13, SAT. Again, this is measuring what the standards are for ACT. And correct me if I'm wrong, Illinois's standards for SAT are different than college board standards, correct?
That the Illinois standards, the Illinois cut scores are different than the college board readiness benchmarks, correct?
So back to what you said before, and back to what I said as far as cut scores for SAT. So if you look at 23-24, for, we're looking at ELA, 57% were at Level 4 or Level 3 is the cut score for SAT ELA. However, I believe I heard you say 90% of our kids will qualify for the state entrance exams. Is that correct?
We have around, I believe it's 87% is our college entrance rate.
And that's all the kids that we test. So even though we're looking, you know, I mean, this is from IEP kids to kids that aren't performing academically well. And we're still at 57% and 90, almost close to 90% or 87% of our students can get that college entrance test. So again, just another example of how people out there are trying to tell you what proficiency is, and they're not telling you the whole story. And I want to make that clear from our community because it's important to know that we are still a very high academically achieving district that does very well, and our kids do very well thanks to our teachers and our parents. So we are laser-focused on that. And next year, I hope we get past pre-pandemic levels in the IAR for math, but we're real close. But yeah, that's the only questions I had, Dr. Tally. Did you want to say something? You looked like you were leaning over.
So when you look at the SATs, yes, as mentioned, we, our cut scores are extremely high in the state of Illinois. And it is because of that high cut score And it is because of that high cut score that impacts everything else down the line. And so therefore, the SAT cut score being high, and then they back mapped everything else. Hence the reason you have the scores for proficiency in IAR. And what they are, so next year, or this year, we will have the ACT. And the state superintendent, Tony Sanders, is saying that we will, the state will come up with new, more appropriate cut scores, which will impact everything else down the road.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned that too, because I'm on that, that working group with IASB and the, and the State Board of Education. They are better clarifying and they recognize that there is a misunderstanding of what proficiency is. And I also forgot to mention too, is not only do we look at IAR, but we're getting the data usually after the school year. So, but we also have other measurements, like we had mentioned as well, the I-Ready, which is really kind of drilling down and helping teachers focus on what the individual students' needs are. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. But thank you, Dr. Telly. That's all I had.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you. Dr. Telly, to follow up on what you just stated, to get cut scores to be more appropriate, can, can you elaborate on what that means? Does that mean closer to how other states are looking at ACT or cutoff points?
It may not necessarily be closer to what other states, it could be. But as mentioned earlier, the, what is, what Illinois counts as being college-ready is one of the four highest in the nation. And the question is, why did they set it at such a level? When college board itself hasn't, didn't even set it at that level. And so now with the ACT, this gives us the perfect time to reset and examine what will, what is appropriate for us as a state with regards to being college-ready. And I think that is what will be happening by the state coming forward.
And when, when Justin and I were sitting here, when they did those first cut scores in 2013, Justin and I, I remember we looked at each other like, our parents are going to lose their minds. Like they're literally going to lose their minds when they see all of our kids proficiency. There's like 85, 90, 95%, and now we're at 57. Like, so I think I understand the reason they did that is because districts like ours were so high performing. And other districts that their kids weren't doing well were maybe inflated. So they wanted to lower it for everybody to kind of better measure the struggling academic districts and measure that growth piece more. But, you know, we need to have a better explanation.
Right, so the problem isn't having high standards, but that the data was just being misinterpreted and not reflective of the actual work our students were doing. So hence reassessment of what these cutoff points will be in the summer to be continued.
Exactly.
And to understand.
And, and to add to that, I think there is interest at the state superintendent level of realigning vertically what these cut scores are showing, so.
Yeah, and I, I kind of want to spend a little time on what board member Rising was talking about in terms of when you're thinking about your own student, how do these scores play a part? And I'm just trying to put myself in a, in a parent's perspective. I am a parent. I have two boys in the, in the district. But if I weren't, if this is the first time I'm listening to this content, what am I to make of this? Like as, as a community member, when I see these scores, what should be my takeaway from this? Would it be to just see where does IPSD stand in comparison to state averages? That's a nice snapshot. Would that be my takeaway from this? Or, or another way of asking is, what, what would be the significance of these scores?
Sure. I think as a parent, as a parent myself, not of students in this district, but also I'm a graduate of this district, so I do bring that perspective. Honestly, I think when you look at state assessment results, I think it's important to look at, yes, the comparison of district performance to the state as a whole. But, you know, it, it's one, one data point in the bigger picture of how students perform. And it's at one point during the school year as well. So there's so many other factors to consider when, I know when I talk with my children about their state test scores, I also take into consideration what their other assessment results are, what their daily classroom performance is like, how they're involved with, so there are so many other contributing factors. I do think this is more, you know, your high-level comparison of performance on a state assessment to what's happening at the state.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate contextualizing with these, how to make sense of these numbers. Now, from within the district, like from that lens, could you give like just a, a big picture, you know, answer to what do we do with this data? Like, how do we make sense of this data? I guess, you know, from the time that I've been on the board, I've consistently see us outperform at state averages. So that's not surprising to me. I'm sure we're all expecting that. So now that we know that, how do we, how are we using this information internally? Would be my next question.
When the pandemic hit, there was a question that I had raised with our recovery. Would it look like a V? Would it look like an L? Would it look like a U? So when we receive this data every year, I'm, it, it's, especially in the area of English Language Arts, it's looking more like a V, which is what we wanted. That's a quick recovery. Math is not so much a V, but it's closer to a V than it is a U. And so we're improving. So to your question, how do we use this data? We're looking at how we are recovering and are our children achieving across the district. So it's, and, and it's important, as was said, this is a snapshot. We're talking about summative data. We have parent-teacher conferences that are coming up soon. And that is a perfect time for parents to talk to their, to their teacher about where is my child academically? With the formative assessments that happen within the schools. We have I-Ready data, which is a formative assessment because it's given three times a year. We did it in the fall, back in September. We'll do it again roughly in February, and then we'll do it again in May. Teachers have other formative assessments that they use to give to their, to the children. And so you, you need to take all of that together. Because the summatives really only tell you at the end of the year. You want to know where you're going throughout the school year and is the child achieving. And the last thing I will say, if you look at, for example, slide, oh, slide tip. When you see the 20%, and this gets a little bit to Mr. Rising's comment. When you see 20% of the students are at level three, some of the students who are in that 20%, many of them, if you were to use Fanta's and Pennell, which is a reading or a language arts assessment tool, you would see that the students are actually reading on grade level. And so the question parents should be asking at parent-teacher conferences at the elementary level, middle school level, is my child reading on grade level? Are they doing grade level math work? And then if not, how do I support them? The IAR, the summative assessments, parents can ask, what does this mean? And, and I, I speak as a little bit of a geek. I used to love format, the summative assessments when I was in school. Loved the Iowa test to basic skills. I was one of those strange little students.
I was not that.
Okay. And then the results, though, were able to tell my parents where I did well. And I did do well.
I would assume that's why you liked it. Yeah, yeah.
But it is something that, because you can work on certain things to improve. And, and so anyway, it is the whole gestalt of it all. What does it all mean? The whole, and you have to look at it all from the whole child and understand where the child is.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that perspective. The last thing I just want to mention is our scores. The numbers that we're seeing with the AP tests and just the number of students taking it. I just want to emphasize how wonderful it is to see those numbers. We know that students who take a single AP class is more likely to not just go into higher ed, but stay in higher ed. The retention rate is higher because they've been exposed to that type of rigor. So whether that's the route any of our students want to take, which we see many do, it's just wonderful that they've had that experience at IPSD. So I really love seeing those numbers. Thank you so much.
Ms. Fazek.
Thank you. There's a lot of positive data here that, like Ms. Jane said, we've, we've come to expect. Right, we're a high-performing district. We're doing well. One of the things I was really excited to see this particular time was on slide nine, the fact that last year we had two schools who had some targeted groups. And so much progress has been made throughout that, that school year to the school year that we are back to zero. So I was, I was really pleased to see that growth and to see the number of exemplary schools almost double. Right, so we're continuing to move in the right direction and serving our students and family as well. My only other question was just a point of clarification about something, actually, Mr. Rising mentioned also on slide 13. For the SAT ELA scores, 57.4, level three and four here, meets and exceeds, and you mentioned 87% of students have, have college acceptance or admittance.
Entrance, right.
Is that 87% of all of the students in a graduate, who graduate? Or 87% of students who choose to apply to higher ed?
That is 87% of graduates.
Of graduates. Okay. Another really exciting point. Right, that, that we have a high percentage of students wanting to continue their education in some way. So I'm really glad to see that. I have no further questions. Thank you.
And to add to that,
Yes.
students who enter into college from our district tend to stay in college.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mr. Karubis.
Three points I want to make. Thanks for stepping up to, to present tonight.
You're welcome.
What, first one is growth. Start with slide 20. You know, in order to have some accountability that we can measure to the community, we need, we set a goal that we want to see some growth. And you can see that in both of these two evidences of success. So I think that's important. We've got a goal. This is what we're striving for. This is what we want to, you know, satisfy. And then on the next slide, we want to, you know, measure that goal. How have we grown? And so we, on this slide, we have two different tests. And correct me if I'm wrong here, we have this I-Ready and this SAT Suite. And those tests are used to measure the growth. Is that, can you tell me a little bit about that?
So the I-Ready measure is given, it's an internal assessment, benchmarking assessment, that's given three times each school year to students in those grades. And there are growth targets between each of those administrations for students. So what you're seeing here is students who have met the growth target from fall to spring or exceeded that. And that, that growth target in particular is defined by I-Ready through their norming studies. For the SAT Suite, that's based on your college board growth norms. There are growth norms that college board sets from ninth to 10th grade, spring to spring, as measured on our state assessments. And also from 10th to 11th grade. And basically, any student who has a particular score during, for example, their ninth grade year, there is a particular estimated score that they would reach on their 10th grade test. And so whether they meet that or exceed that is seen in these numbers. Does that help?
Yeah, 100%. That's great. Thank you. I think to the point about what is a parent going to take away from this? You know, one might be, we, there's a lot of tests administered. But I think what I would like, and I'd kind of like to get consensus on the board, is on this growth measure, why is it valuable? Do we, another data point to present on this growth would be, how are we doing, how good of a job are we doing growing the students comparable to other districts? Because I think that that would provide information to our community about how we're doing with growing our students. So if, if a probe, is that data readily accessible? That doesn't require too much administrative services?
So I'm not certain if that's available for these, for the K8 measures. But certainly for the state tests, we, I think we have looked at some of our comparable districts in terms of their growth. But we certainly, any, for any of these state assessments, like IAR growth, we do have comparisons across the state.
And the reason why we don't have the K8 I-Ready is that's because it's our test and other districts might not administer that.
It's, it's not our assessment. It's a, I-Ready is a national assessment, but they only give us our scores. So we cannot compare to other districts because not every district does that assessment. Some districts use STAR, some use another assessment called, so there are several different assessments that, that districts are using. So it's just not possible to do that one.
Okay, well, without going kind of into the, yeah, the extreme detail on this, I would appreciate administration kind of considering a way, however appropriate, to give us some way to measure, measure growth as comparable to other districts. And maybe we need to get consensus on the board to do that, but that's my ask. Because I think that would be beneficial to the parents in our community. President Donahue, do you want to try to get consensus at this point or have?
Well, I think we can query offline or whatever to see what the thoughts are. I was just wondering if at the state IAR level, it seems like that would, like state, not our comparable districts, but, because growth is one of the measurements, right? ELA growth, math growth. So that should be public info for across the state.
Yes, so for example, if one goes to the Illinois report card, which I'm doing right now, and then you took, you put in, for example, let's say, 203, academic progress, and they have growth on IAR. There is information about their growth levels. So that could be a possibility. But what I would rather do is we'll wait till Mr. Spandl comes in and let's have that conversation. We don't have to make a decision tonight.
No, yeah. No, yeah. And plus, I think we're all conscious of making sure that we aren't causing a burdensome request. So I'd also like to understand that, too.
Thanks. And my second point is on Slide 15. This one, kind of the, the crux is we're kind of, we're measuring different students. So we're seeing our district over four years here, but it's four different groups of students. So it, to show how the scores might have increased or decreased over time, it's kind of an apples-to-oranges measurement, right?
Right. It is not cohort data. You are right. It is different students each year.
Okay.
And specifically juniors who take it during spring of their junior year, correct?
So this is kind of another area that I think would be beneficial to our parents and community to have a presentation include information on comparable districts. Because although we can't show growth in this instance for the same cohorts, we can show how our district did, not only to the state, but to the other districts. And they do have to take the SAT information. And the information should be readily available to the public on the Illinois Report Card. But if we can get that condensed in a slide, I think that would be beneficial to the board and the community. But you guys can consider that if it's, if it's appropriate. I'm not making it a mandatory. Another just general comment on the, on that slide, and is kind of just want to vent some frustration with the changing of the tests here. To keep it a little bit briefly, we, why is that a problem? We've had, we went from 2000 to, I think it was, 2015, where we were, measured the ACT in the state of Illinois, where the state of Illinois made it mandatory. And then in 2016, we switched over to the SAT. And then we're going to take that into the 2024, and then after, we're going back to the ACT. And that's a little problematic, so, is because we're losing some of the longitudinal data. And so in order to measure the progress over time, you kind of need the same test. Otherwise, it's measuring it for a while and then compiling it up and starting over. So when you present this information next year, maybe not next year, but, yeah, soon when this stuff progresses through the system, we're not going to be able to show what we did in, you know, one year because it's going to be one data point. And we can probably do some calculus to say, this is what happens. You know, we're able to convert some of the SAT scores to the ACT scores. But that is also an imperfect math science. So I think there's additional value in to say, what, how are we doing comparable to other districts? Because all the other districts are going through that transition. So it's more just a comment. And then lastly, what I enjoy about this is this is a presentation on academic achievement, but we're not just measuring the test scores. Although there is a lot of test and data in here, which tries to provide, you know, some objective, projective measure, we're talking about other things, the chronic absenteeism, student mobility and some other stuff. So I appreciate how we're measuring academic achievement on other planes than just the test scores. So that's it. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping in for Charles. This is an important topic, and I hope that our parents and community take time to listen to the presentation and the comments from the board members because I think they, all of them had substantial comments that clarify this data and also help position what sometimes can be misinterpreted in our community, especially when it comes to proficiency and what these ratings actually mean. So for that, it's very important. And I also agree it's beneficial to see some of these other data points that are in here with student mobility and, you know, absenteeism has a large impact on our report cards. So it's, you know, I'm really, really pleased with the school ratings that we have this year. I'm happy to see chronic absenteeism going down. I also wanted to point out that everyone, most students, have to take these tests, right? The IAR and SAT. And right now, our school population has about 12% of our students that are in the EL program. So they haven't mastered English yet to leave that program, but yet they take this test. So, you know, it, it's going to be a struggle for them when you think about how difficult that might be to, to take that. We also have 12% of our students with IEPs, which also could be impacting on results. So, you know, when you consider that in the population of our schools, it really is, you know, interesting to see the results that we get with our, our testing. So I am happy with what we presented today. I'm really pleased with all of the comments from the board. I think this is positive results for us this year, and thank you so much for your presentation.
Ms. Donahue, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did have, I did have, I, I usually, when we do this, we have this presentation. I always am usually also very interested in our cultural aspects and our populations. So Dr. Tally, we have done a nice job at different points in the year of shoring up and sharing what we are doing with the populations and where we see not at our, even at our all totals. So would, would certainly be, look forward to hearing some of those areas that we continue to work on with some of the, and we've talked about some of the things that we've done over the summer for students that have not necessarily been at levels where the overall population is, where our overall, are you not, does that not make sense?
Let's, I'm sorry.
When we've, we've had some focus.
Yeah, I understand. I understand the question. I'm just trying to understand when we have presented this at the board meetings. I don't think we have.
We've had some, we've had some focuses on some summer work that has been done. Summer programming for.
Forgive me. I'm just not having, let's talk later. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just not, I'm not remembering what you're asking me right now.
Okay, for some of our, for some of our Title I schools where we've had some different initiatives that have gone on for students where they may not have had, where math supports have needed to be. Okay. I'll, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
It's not coming to me.
Okay, that's okay.
A little follow-up.
I'll follow up. Thank you. That's okay.
All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone's time.
All right. Our, our students that are here, do you have to have something signed for school or anything?
I asked them already.
Oh, okay, okay. I was going to say, because we could do it real quick. But all right, our last topic is our yearly discussion about IASB and the resolutions and changes that they're proposing that they're going to present at conference. So I'm going to ask Ms. Fosdick to lead us through a discussion on these changes.
First, I'm going to ask, did everyone have a chance to review the resolution committee report?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any specific concerns about the recommendations of the committee? There are six do adopt resolution proposals. There are four up for appeal. And there are three that they are suggesting do not adopt. Are there any specific resolutions that you would like to discuss as a board at this time?
No? Comments or?
There's none from me, but maybe you provide a little context on.
Would you like to walk through them?
No, I definitely don't. I agree with all the recommendations, but I think it's important to, to talk about the context of this since you are the appointed delegate.
All right. I thought it might help. Just don't go into these in detail, but just say what the topic, like what is the proposal area or whatever.
We can definitely do that. Let me get down to that point. So this is the time, this is the report that is pulled together throughout the year before the annual conference. School districts have an opportunity, or school boards have an opportunity to suggest resolutions on topics that they think are important, that the State Association of School Boards supports and advocates for and encourages or requires school districts to adhere to. And then also, the Illinois Association of School Boards then also advocates for that at the legislative level, or we hope that they will. That, that's really the point of resolutions as I understand it. Mr. Rising, since I'm newer in this position, do you have anything to add right now?
No, I mean, you pretty much nailed it. So there's all these resolutions IASB puts forward and issue, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards. Their, their workers, their attorneys then go and advocate the legislators. When they're talking about educational issues, they'll support all of the school districts as it relates to those resolutions. So yeah, you pretty much nailed it. You know, I know in more recent years, they're trying to, the Illinois Association of School Boards is trying to cut down on the number of resolutions they accept from individual local school boards. So they take a lot more time considering if this is representative of all districts and if it's a duplication of something that already exists. So they're trying to streamline it and getting maybe a little less accepting of, because remember, there was, there was one year, there was like 14 resolutions. It was ridiculous. I mean, it was just way too many. So go ahead. Yeah.
And the resolutions are something that each district delegate votes on at the General Assembly at the conference. A committee comes together once they have all of the resolution proposals in, reviews them collectively, and there are representatives from several different divisions, geographical divisions in the state of Illinois. And then they put forth this report that gives recommendations for which resolutions IASB should adopt, which ones could be pulled forth for more discussion, and which ones they just flat out say do not adopt. So the ones, the six that they have that are recommended to do adopt are, the first is a dual language, which is suggesting that the Illinois State Seal of Bilitracy would satisfy the world language requirement of high school students. That was put forth by School District U46. The second is to create an EBF authorized charter school funding. This was put forth by Woodland CCSD 50. And it's urging the adoption basically of the same kind of evidence-based funding that we have in state funding, but for charter schools. The third is the tax increment financing accountability, put forth by Skokie School District 69. It advocates for, I will read this one to you because this is outside of my, my wheelhouse. Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall advocate for the Illinois General Assembly and Governor to enact legislation that reforms the TIF process in a manner that is sensible and responsible, keeps communities whole, and prioritizes greater accountability to taxpayers. And then there are a number of specific measures. The fourth is Faith's Law Centralized State Agency for EHRs, put forth by Lake Forest 115 and Lake Forest School District 67. It is suggesting that the IASB advocate to the Illinois Legislature to require the State Board of Education or another entity to create a statewide database to fulfill the employment history review requirement of Faith's Law. And the district rationale was with the implementation of Faith's Law, Illinois must ensure that there's a streamlined inclusive and universal system for reporting and accountability to ensure that no alleged offender is overlooked by any school district. Mr. Rising, do you want to expound on Faith's Law there?
Nope.
All right. And then the fifth one is healthcare coverage. And it is asking that IASB supports changes that require the Illinois Department of Central Management Services to create a unified health plan for all school districts to opt into. Are there any questions or discussions about those recommendations do adopt? There's number six down here, so I'm sorry I was hiding.
I don't, I, I agree with all of them. I actually thought it was a good set of proposals. I was surprised there were as many as there were because I thought they were trying to keep them down to a small number. But I also thought some of them were interesting, like the charter school one. I guess they're basically asking that the charter school formula reflects what the public schools have to do for, for our funding. They determine our funding by how many English language learners do you have, how many IEP students? So how many of them need special services? And I didn't realize charter schools didn't have that formula. They just got money. Like you have, you know, whatever, 2,000 students, this is how much money you get. So it's like, that was an interesting thing I didn't know anything about. I also thought the TIF one was very good, and we, for a long time, talked about proposing a TIF one. So I was happy to see, see that, so.
I was really happy to see the central management one.
Yes.
That one, that was connected to Faith's Law. Very happy to see that one.
And I'm assuming the healthcare, creating this central way of negotiating for healthcare costs that we, our district wouldn't object to that, like there, because it seemed like it was an opt-in kind of, like, resolution also. I don't know if Matt wants to look at that one, make sure there's nothing in there that.
Yeah, we'll look into it. I see him over there.
The last one that I neglected to mention is about polling places, put forth by Lincolnshire Prairie View School District, Diamond Lake School District, and Hawthorne. And the gist of this one is that they would like to say that if your school is not used for a polling place, you don't have to close on Election Day. And the committee agreed that that should be left to local control, whether or not a school should close on Election Day based on whether or not it's being used as a polling place. Resolutions eligible for appeal.
I don't think we need to go through them.
Do we need to go through these?
Anybody want?
Okay.
Yeah.
The only one that I thought was interesting and worth discussing was the cell phone policy.
Yes.
This one's a hairy topic already. But again, similar to the polling place here, I think that's, that would be an incredibly difficult thing to do as a statewide policy, given that we all have different needs and student populations about cell phone usage in our schools.
I, I actually talked to Mark Harms, who's, you know, one of the board members that represents all the school boards. I talked to him at a DuPage meeting. Him and I were talking about that, and we kind of both agreed to, like, well, and you're going to see legislation in this next legislative session of legislators trying to push through what they believe cell phone policy should be. But I will go back to the state legislators should not, nor should IASB adopt a policy that's right for every school district because that violates total local control of what we feel is best for our students and what, what is best for our community. So, I mean, heck, it could differ between school and classroom for all that matters, right? So, yeah, I just think that gets into an area where it's kind of legislative overstepping there. But, you know, I would always stay away from that.
Well, and we are going to have a cell phone discussion at the next meeting, right? With our students to get some more insight on their thinking around cell phone usage in schools, so, yeah.
Yes, it is something that we're discussing as a committee in the district and looking at the options and the needs and the state of cell phone use as it is currently. But yeah, this goes to a bigger, much bigger jump at the state level. And then do not adopt. And then do not adopt, there are several. Are there any other questions or specific things that people would like to discuss?
We're going to have a vote this time or next time or?
Next time, so, so this was just presenting and seeing if anybody had any questions for Ms. Fosdick to take back to I A S B or whatever, and at our next meeting, we'll vote to either affirm or disagree with the positions that I A S B has taken on these, so.
I would like to suggest that we do that as a bundle, since we had no particular discussion about eat, about any of the six.
Yeah, I think we need to have a motion on the ones that were do adopt, I think we need to have a motion on the ones that, just in case they're brought up again, the ones that they recommended do not adopt, I think we should vote on that, too, just in case one gets pulled and put on the agenda for you. At least you have a record that said that we should just stay with the position that I A S B Resolution Committee. And then I think there was a motion there about parliamentary practice that we probably need to have a, just a motion on. So probably three motions is my guess.
Yes.
We can do a consent agenda for, for, if we agreed with all?
Well, yeah, we can for the, yeah, we'll have one for the first six, we'll have one of the do not adopts for, for seven A through ten B, and then we'll have to have a, a motion for the parliamentary practice procedure, so there'll be three motions probably.
Which is asking essentially that if a constitutional amendment disagrees with Roberts' rules of order, that they have the freedom to change.
I definitely think we could put it on the consent agenda item, I don't think there's a lot of discussion here, and.
All right, well, thank you.
I'd also just like to update, we did, Ms. Demme and I did put forth a suggestion to adding a core advocacy value, because we were advocating for I A S B to encourage its member districts to consider and include actively seek out student voice. And given that that didn't really fall neatly into the resolution category, we've had other discussions, and that is actually going to be discussed at the Board of Directors meeting, because they don't currently have a process in place to add or alter the core advocacy values as they stand.
So all twenty of those guiding principles for school boards, they just totally eliminated. And like, three of them were ones that we proposed as a district over the last twenty years or something, they just got rid of all of those, like they don't exist anymore?
Kind of reworked them into the core advocacy values.
It's so disappointing. I hope, let us know if, if that's something that you guys have to present and, and give testimony to in front of their board, because I would like, I would seriously like all of us to show up.
We wrote it, we, we submitted, we submitted a letter, gosh, a couple of months ago now, and it's been reviewed, and so it's going before the board for discussion.
And I did have an opportunity to talk with Mark Harms last week. He wanted just a little more background about it, and wanted to have some of our ideas about how it could be applied in school districts across the state, particularly school districts that just have elementary school students. So, you know, concerns by other board members could potentially be addressed at that point.
I would have picked his brain more on that, because like, what was he asking? Like, you know, there's governing, there's guiding principles as far as school boards and governance rules? You know, you, you can't set them in stone, because they're just suggestions, they're guiding principles on governance. Same thing with what those were, like, they were guiding principles of what a school district should do, people can choose not to do them if they don't want, but just, just to get rid of them, like, how is he, I mean, we don't implement the resolutions, so I don't know, what was he, how are we going to implement the guiding principles? It makes no sense. I feel like maybe you need to have a discussion, or Susan, or I can even step in with like legal at I A S B.
I don't think it was so much as a, he was asking me to ask how that would be done, he was trying to anticipate questions from other board members, so that he would have some more information about what our intention was in presenting this change. That was my understanding at the time.
And Mark, we can, from a standpoint of the, the belief statements and how they move into the guiding principles, we can get further clarification on that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Rising is talking about a broader question, not just our proposal about students, but what happened to all those ones that we had, yeah, so, hmm, okay. Anything else on that? I did attend the Len meeting, and I have some brief notes that I will send to Bill, Representative Bill Foster was there, so he had some interesting comments that I thought would be nice for everyone to see, so. All right, anything else on legislative advocacy or Board of Education update? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
For a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay.